All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would we all rise for the flag salute please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will we all remain standing for a moment of silence for others in harm's way and for all of our armed forces overseas and our... All right, thank you. The statement of advanced notice. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the United... of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting in the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. And we'll take a roll call please.
Mrs. Aquino. Mrs. Fenton.
Here.
Mrs. Vigara.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mrs. Melendez.
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Orzillo.
Here.
Mr. Strelachi.
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse.
And I am here. And I will take a motion to recess into a closed session.
So moved.
And...
Second.
Second. We have a second with Miss Melendez. Uh, we'll take a roll call. Any questions? No? Can we take a roll call on that?
Mrs. Fenton.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez.
Yes.
Mrs. Vigara.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo.
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi.
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse.
Yes. And be it resolved that the board meet in closed session for the purpose of discussing confidential pupil matters, be it further resolved that the matters discussed in closed session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exist. And we are in closed session.
And we are back. I will take a motion to come back to open session.
Sound the huff.
And all in favor, or can we have a second?
Second.
And we'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Should be right back.
Yeah. Dusty had to take a break. Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
I am here. And we will take a motion for the approval of the minutes 3.1 and 3.2. Mr. Strelachi?
Yeah, I'd like to take a motion to approve minutes 3.1 and 3.2.
Second.
And we'll take a roll call, Ms. Shonan. Oh, do we have any questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call then.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
And yes. And do we have any communications or petitions to the board? Anyone?
No.
Nope. And okay, seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Jackie Bello, who is our Director of Student Support Services and Programming. She'll be presenting on our HIB self-assessment for the 2023-24 school year.
Hi, good evening, Mrs. Narcisse, members of the Board of Education, members of the community. Happy to be here to discuss our HIB harassment intimidation and bullying self-assessment for the 2023-24 school year. So this is last school year. So every year, we are asked to self-assess our harassment intimidation bullying programs procedures. We are given guidelines by the State Department of Education to complete the self-assessment. Those guidelines include a scoring rubric with evidence documents that's quite detailed. We complete it in each school where the anti-bullying specialists, the ABSs, the administrators, the school climate and safety teams all come together to review the previous year's practices and procedures. We also discuss district-wide at anti-bullying specialist meetings so that we can make sure there's continuity in the way that we're reading and understanding the rubric criteria. And then we present it, as I'm doing here tonight, and then if it is accepted, we will submit the results to the Board of Education and they will post the results on the website. So the scoring rubric, it changes a little bit every year. But for quite a few years now, it's been consistent in that it's had eight core elements and they're listed up there on the screen. So everything from our reporting procedures, our policies and how we train our staff and the community on our policies, to the personnel who's working most closely with our HIB initiatives. Everything gets a different category and there are 26 total indicators in the assessment. So each indicator gets a rubric score of zero to three. Two means that we've met all the requirements, so that's satisfactory. So if we scored a two in every category, the passing score would be a 52 for that school. And if we scored some twos and some threes, we'll get a score somewhere between 52 and 78. 78 is the highest possible score. So this is the previous school year. This is what I presented last year from the 22-23 school year. So just so we have some comparisons, we can see that most of our schools were between 72, 75. We did have a lower score in the middle school. So we did kind of implement our own action plan where we really looked carefully at the rubric and used it as our guiding force to make sure that we were going above and beyond. So even though we did meet satisfactorily all of the standards, we wanted to excel. And the district average last year was a 71, two years ago rather. Now, this is last year, which is what we're reporting now. So we did go up. Each school went up a little bit. Some years, schools might go back a point or two, and that's normal. The rubric is not the exact same every year. So although we review it and use it as our guiding document, we can't really predict what changes might come the following year. So if it does go back a couple of points, we wouldn't be too worried. Fortunately, this year, everything happened to go up, especially the middle school, which is a much higher number at a 67 as compared to a 56 the previous year. And all of the other schools went up a point or two in each category. So our district average is 74.7 for this year. This is an interesting graphic that I put in here because I do want everyone to understand that the middle school is really unique in that that age demographic across the state typically has the most incidence of HIB investigations, not necessarily founded HIBs, but HIB investigations. So this is from Department of Education. The Anti-Bullying Task Force put together a very comprehensive report last year. They did include this graph in the report, which I was very grateful for, to just illustrate that it's about half of all of the investigations occur in middle school, not only here in Mount Olive, across the state. And we are seeing notably that the most recent year here has an uptick in elementary investigations. Now they're at 24%, almost the same as the high school investigations, which is that top lighter blue. This data, this was the most recent data they had when they compiled the report. It goes to school year 2021. So the trainings that we held last year, and this is part of what we assessed ourselves on, we did a lot of legal training. We had legal training for our anti-bullying specialists. You'll see ABS in this presentation. That's what that stands for. We had our administrative teams and our counselors undergo legal training. We did threat assessment training. We did a parent series with Thrive Alliance to help educate parents about conflict. We did a lot of assemblies with our students, the principals and the vice principals. I know the middle school worked on that a lot last year to help get their score to come up. And our school safety and climate team. And then finally, we did the Citizens Academy, which was a great community program last year. So so far, we just started this school year, or it feels like that, at least. We're already at Halloween. But we've done quite a bit of training already in the district for this school year. We do have David Nash, who's a well-known name in education and in anti-bullying efforts. He works down at Legal One at the New Jersey Principal Supervisors Association. Very well-respected attorney who keeps current with all bullying case law. So he came and did an audit that we requested of him. We're still going to meet with him a little bit more to review, you know, what some of his recommendations are. And then he's going to, he did a legal training already for the principals, for the Board of Education. We still have our bi-weekly anti-bullying specialist meetings. We did a professional development day on October 14th. That was Ed Camp-style. So one of the choices that staff could have was to come and learn more about HIB and anti-bullying initiatives and additional threat assessment trainings as well. So we're underway already. So just to quickly review the investigation procedures, I think this is really great for the public to know because, you know, as a parent, sometimes it's hard to know all of the specifics and the ins and outs. But I just want to take a moment to review. This is something that, this is a slide I've used in a variety of presentations because it really emphasizes that conflict is a very, very normal part of life. It's normal for adults to experience conflict with each other. It's certainly normal for kids to have conflict with one another. And sometimes those conflicts can be pretty serious and pretty upsetting and you need some adult intervention, and that's okay. And we always are going to look at conflicts to try to help students, whether it applies through our code of conduct policy, whether it applies to our harassment intimidation bullying policy, or whether those students just need some mediation so that they can help work through their conflicts with a counselor in a way that's not punitive. So in any event, we're always here to help students with conflicts. What I would love to have happen is for conflict to become the common word and the common language that's used. Because too frequently, we use the word bullying when we want to describe a conflict. And bullying has a legal implication now, that word. So when you're talking to staff, school staff, and you say bullying when you really mean conflict, it can get tricky because then we do have to begin a bullying investigation, which isn't necessarily what people are always trying to communicate. So when we do do a bullying investigation, what we look at is the HIB definition in New Jersey. And this is part of it. I took out some important highlights of it. So it's any act. It could be nonverbal. It could be a gesture. It could be something that's repeated. It could be a single incident. But I highlighted and read in the italics some of the important pieces we look for. So it has to be reasonably perceived as being motivated by some type of distinguishing characteristic. So what does that mean? That means if I can't change something about myself in 30 seconds or less, whether that's the outfit I'm wearing, the way my hair is styled, the way I look, something about my race, gender, ethnicity, perceived sexual orientation. If it's something that we can't change pretty quickly and a conflict is motivated by that characteristic, then perhaps it could be an incident of HIB. It can take place anywhere, on school property, at a school function, off school grounds. But that last piece in red, it has to substantially disrupt or interfere with that child's education or with the orderly operation of the school and the rights of other students. So those are some big distinguishing factors that make it different than conflict. And then our investigation procedures, this is also great for the public to know. This is our district website. Under the About section, you'll see that there's a tab for harassment intimidation bullying. And it says slash peer conflict. So you can report either one on this tab. So if you just want to report something, you can go here and report either a conflict or something that you want to be looked at as bullying. And then once you click that, it'll bring you to this screen. So that red box on the bottom, the harassment intimidation bullying one is circled. But underneath that, it says, "Report a code of conduct violation." So what happens then? If you click on that and fill out either one of those forms, it's going to populate a data warehouse that we use called Hibster. So all the reports come to us through an email. I'll get a copy of the email. School principal will get a copy of the email. And then we have to act on it. So that's when the principal will assign something to an anti-bullying specialist or look into it themselves. If you clicked on code of conduct, we have 10 days to investigate. We'll send the report back to the principal and the principal will notify the families of the outcomes. We don't always take 10 days. If we have answers and we can wrap it up quicker, we do. But we have a maximum of 10 days. And then the report gets sent to me so that I can review it and approve it and submit it to the Board of Education to accept. And then we do discipline right away if we find that something inappropriate has occurred. So whether or not HIB is founded, if something inappropriate occurred, we can impart discipline right away. And that's our practice. And then the biggest thing that I want everybody to know is that we are meeting. I meet with the anti-bullying specialists bi-weekly and we review trends. We look at repeat victimization, repeat offenses, or just repeatedly being in this process of HIB investigations. Sometimes you have kids who are just back and forth with HIB investigations and we want to make sure they're okay. That's the bottom line, is that we just want to look into everything, make sure our students are okay, and give assistance where needed.
Thank you. So I have two things I wanted to share. First of all, I wanted to point out that our Board attended our school board conference last week and a number of them actually attended sessions that reviewed HIB. So in addition to the training they received from David Nash, they also attended sessions last week. So I want to thank you, thank the Board also for taking this very seriously, for enhance their own understanding of the parameters of what it constitutes a HIB. So thank you to the Board. I also, Ms. Bello, would you mind maybe also point out perhaps some of the, I want to say proactive measures we have in place as far as program is concerned? Because, you know, when we look at HIB, we talk about, you know, conflict, that's after something happens. I just want to talk about some of the things that we are doing as a district in order to ensure that we are developing, you know, the mindset of our young adults, our students, also areas that they can get help from.
Sure. So we've, we've always had some great initiatives. You know, elementary schools love having kindness ambassadors and they do a lot through that program. In the middle school, the students, you know, partake in assemblies. In elementary, they do assemblies with each other. And then the high school has a lot of great clubs that really spread the word, you know, to promote pro-social behaviors and anti-bullying. But this year, I'm super excited about two initiatives in particular. One of them is the No Place For Hate initiative that is K through eight. That initiative is an anti-bias from the Anti-Defamation League. They put that out. And it's a lot of support for schools to build upon the programs that we already have in place and really help the students make a connection in their daily life so that it's not just talked about in an assembly and then not brought up again until the next event. It's going to be constant, talked about in the classrooms. They're signing pledges. The students are joining committees to be on the No Place For Hate committee because it's about them having a voice. It's about them being the drivers of the program. And then in the high school, we have two initiatives that I know Mr. Stansberry has worked very hard on and his staff has been very excited for Teen Mental Health First Aid. We wanted to push that out last year. We trained some teaching staff. They were so excited about it that they spoke to some other teaching staff who was also excited about it. So we were able to get even more staff trained so that we can reach more students with Teen Mental Health First Aid. And then we also have Rutgers, the Boggs Center has a very well-known program called Positive Behavior Schoolwide Intervention Supports, PBSIS. And there's a lot of support with that, too. We've already met with them, I don't even know how many times, just to get everything off the ground. But it's something where we want the whole school speaking the same language. Every teacher in every classroom and every aide and everyone will know about these positive behavior supports. So it's a slow build. We're in the early stages of that right now, but that's another program I'm excited about.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions from the board?
Yes. Ms. Bello, could you clarify about the 10 days of investigation, if they are school days, calendar days, business days?
Yes, thank you so much. That's a great question because they're only That's a great question because they're only school days. So next week, for example, we're only in school for three days. So our data warehouse system, which is called Hibster, it automatically calculates for us. So for any investigation we're doing, we can click in and make sure that we're following our deadlines. But also, every once in a while, if there's something that is a very egregious act where we need to report information to the police department, which sometimes happens, you know, biased speech has to be reported to the police department, and certainly some other acts. The police might have to tell us to pause our investigation so that they can investigate. We don't want to step on their toes and reveal too much information that we shouldn't be revealing or get answers before them. So they may ask us to pause our investigation. And then we get something in writing from the police on the date that they ask us to pause it so that we can still have our 10 days to investigate. And every once in a while, that goes somewhat extended. And so our anti-bullying specialists are in constant contact with the police just to make sure that they didn't forget to say something to us, which isn't the case. We have a really nice relationship. But just to make sure that checks and balances.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other comments from the Board or questions? No?
Thank you so much for all, all the information and all of the trainings.
And we're actually gonna, it's not on our agenda, but we're gonna actually invite our student liaisons up to report.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Nora Risk, and I am your student liaison.
And my name's Melissa Hahn, and I'm a student council officer. So first, to start off, we're gonna start off with some of our old news that's been going on. So most recently, we've had October 4th. We had our block party, which, thank you. Thank you. So again, so October 4th, our block party, we had over 150 people show up, which was a really good turnout, especially for a block party in all our clubs. It was really good. We had Kona Ice come, the empanada guy. And we also had our Rock and Roll Academy, which we all know that they do a really good job. So we love when they show up. Then October 5th, we had our football game. And that's where we had our homecoming winners announced, which was Sean Lavery and Lizzie Coyle. So that's exciting because it's always a good thing. And then October 8th, we had Detective Tim Schumacher present to the freshman parents the dangers of vaping. And a lot of families showed up. I think we had 200 families show up. And then Friday, October 11th, Mount Olive's first-ever garba night, which is a Indian celebration night. We had cultural music, dance, food. And I know around 300 people showed up, which is really good. Yeah, it was really awesome. And then last week, we also had our Best Buddies Week of Inclusion. And they also had Hispanic Heritage Month, which was sponsored by our DEI Student Council. And they also, we had a, they created, October 15th, they had a teacher-kids soccer night, soccer game, and it was fun. So to see all go up against our, like, favorite teachers. And then lastly, for old news, well, for me, October 16th, we had our NEHS induction, and over 90 kids got inducted, which is a lot for an honor society. Okay, and then I'm gonna hand the mic to Nora.
Hi, guys. So continuing on with old news, on Thursday, October 17th, our music department, so our choir band and orchestra had their very first showcase concert of the year. On Friday, October 18th, our Model UN took a trip to Dwight Englewood High School, where we had our first conference of the year. And we had senior Lamine Gola Fali win position of Outstanding Delegate. And Merrill Paya Pali, a sophomore, won position of Best Delegate. On Wednesday, October 23rd, we had our annual Save Trick or Treat with over 200 families showing up to the track, around 20 to 30 clubs participating with lots and lots of fun activities and candy. On Thursday, October 24th, our drama club had their very first Broadway night of the year. Really exciting. The same night, our National Art Society had a career night. And that day, as Ms. Bello mentioned, with our teen, teen mental health first aid, Mr. Stansberry gave a speech to the sophomores, and over 70 sophomores volunteered to join the Teen Mental Health Initiative. October 25th, our juniors had their first class trip to Dorney for Fright Fest. And October 26th, our Unified Club had a bake sale at the Chester Meat Market. Our sophomore, Emmeline Kircher, she wrote a poem called Sophomore. And she won first prize at the Morristown Festival of Books Teen Writing Contest and was recognized onstage at the Mayo Performing Arts Center. And she read from her work to people all across New Jersey.
Okay, so that's it for all of our old news. So for our coming up news, tomorrow is actually our NHS induction, which is probably, it's a really big deal for everyone. It's at 6:30. And then Wednesday, October 30th, we have a few events happening that day. So each grade will be decorating the hallway, which is a tradition we do. It's kind of like a grade level. We go against each other, decorate for Halloween. It's fun. Everyone gets involved. We call it haunted hallways. Then the senior class will also be doing Haunter, Haunter Ride. So it's where we decorate our cars. And it's a fundraiser for the senior class to raise some money for prom. And that's really exciting. So that'll be happening on Wednesday. And then the prize will be a half-off your prom ticket, which is a really big deal because, yeah, prom tickets are sometimes expensive. And then we also will be having our first-ever movie night at the high school. It's through student council. And we're gonna be displaying Hocus Pocus on the Jumbotron on the football field. So it's gonna be really fun and exciting because it's a new event for us. And then that'll be at 7:00 PM. And class of 25 will also be doing concessions to also help raise money for our prom tickets. Then November 4th, Dr. Mikey Fallon, who's been here for 19 years, a psychologist, performer, poet, presenting to the freshmen and seniors for, and will have an open house tour November 4th at 6:00 PM for elementary school kids and middle schoolers.
And then for our sports, this past Friday, October 25th, we had our senior night and our youth night for football. And we won. We are gonna be in the playoffs next week, home versus Newark Central. So we are now in the quarterfinals. Our field hockey team made it to semifinals. And tonight, they actually just had their first win for their states team. Girls volleyball also won their New Jersey Conference. And our very own Ms. Kelly Livingston had her 100th career win as head field hockey coach from Mount Olive High School. Our first marking period ends Friday, November 1st. And last but not least, we have our National Merit Scholarship Qualifiers, Tomas Honda, Blessing on a Gone Way, and Angelina Wang. That's all from us for today.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the Board, ladies?
Yeah.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Who won the soccer game, staff or students?
You sure it was students?
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
Just checking. Was it close?
I heard it was fun, though. I heard we had a great time.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Anyone else from the Board?
Do you know anything about gymnastics? Are they going to States this weekend?
Oh, they are. They're really, they're doing great. They're actually breaking records every single day. They are breaking school records every day. I think this is one of the best years our gymnastics team has had.
Oh, absolutely. Great.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a great update.
Thank you. We're gonna scroll back up. And with that, we're gonna go on to committee reports. I think the only one that met was Finance Committee, correct?
Yes, correct. That is correct. We met today for a whopping 25 minutes because we then had a fun, we needed to go into closed session. So that cut into that. Present, Wer, myself, Mr. Ozillo, Mr. Strelachi, Ms. Narcisse, Ms. Shonin, and Dr. Bangia. We literally had time to just get an update on the HVAC update at the middle school. And that was how we spent our 25 minutes. We have another meeting coming up on Tuesday, the 5th, where we will get into it. And it will not be just 25 minutes. So brace yourselves, those of you who will be there. It'll be a long one.
Can we go under two hours?
You know, the jury's still out. I would love for us to commit to that. I just can't. All right, I can't make a promise. It's a large agenda, so.
They have a lot of work going on.
Yes, yes, it's a big district.
Do we have any other committee reports? Nope, seeing none. I'm gonna open the floor up to any parent association liaisons that would like to report out, any parent-teacher associations, any subcommittees. And the mic is open. Now we gotta do a mic change.
Hello. I'm Amy Marini. I'm reporting for CPAG, which I feel like a bad penny, but it's Special Education Parent Advisory Group. We work with the district to collaborate on systemic concerns regarding anything that pertains to children with special educational needs. So since the last time I saw you guys, two weeks ago, it's been a busy two weeks, for me, personally, at least. And so I just wanted to give you guys an update so that way in two weeks, it's not like an hour long.
I'm really sorry. We have a competition going.
On October 17th, I actually sat in on the SEAC meeting, which I know, I've talked about a lot about SEAC, and it stands for the State Special Education Advisory Council. And I apologize for reading my 700 pages of notes. But the meeting was fabulous. It is, you know, I would strongly recommend any district that might actually be watching me speak right now or anybody within the district to attend because it's, it's eye-opening as to all of the ways that, at the state level, how they function to really meet the needs of all students with any special need. You know, they talk about, you know, not just inclusive stuff, but also military families, homeless families, which is not the word that they use, but, sorry. And so they, they started off with introducing the council members, which are all some of the different, you know, state representatives. But then they each went through and talked from each different, like, division who sits on the council with, with everybody. So just off the top of my head, because I remembered what these acronyms stood for because it's like alphabet soup. There was someone from the Commission for the Blind, someone from the Department of Health, the head of DVRS, and the Department of Labor, SPAN, different parent support, like, individuals that are highly involved at the state level, and many, many others that I don't even remember all the acronyms. So I apologize. After they introduced each other, we had an extremely informative, and maybe it was just for me informative, but from Kim Murray, the director of Office, from the Office of Special Education at the state level. And she discussed something called High Level Practices, which maybe this is something, something that I'm just unfamiliar with. But it was through Cedar Center that they're beginning to roll out at the state level. So they were talking about how it's a combination of RTI and different levels of tiered levels of support, but that this is a new, this high-leverage practices is something that they're gonna be rolling out. So heads up. And then they talked about new website resources that they're gonna be providing to families to avoid due process because of New Jersey being one of the highest states in the country that have the most due processes filed from districts that the state has to basically coordinate and manage. And then they talked about, also in her presentation, the website update with regards to PCAS, which I know I have said at this mic before, which is a Rutgers initiative. And PCAS stands for Person-Centered Approach to Schools in Transition. But what they were talking about was that it's actually gonna be workbooks available at all grade levels now, not just high school, which I thought was extremely interesting that I want to follow up on the website when that's updated. They are going to be offering, through the Office of Special Ed, new e-learning series for families also to understand conflict resolution when they're working with the districts instead of immediately going to due process. They also shared how they are working to change the aim to transform inclusive education and continuing with the all-mains-all type of concept. And they shared a really, I felt it was really inspirational YouTube video, which I actually shared on our CPAG Facebook page by Shelley Moore. And it just talks about, like, literally changing your aim as if when you're bowling, I thought, I love the rash, the, like, the visual to it, that when you're bowling, when you're, typically, the bowler shoots for the middle, but then the really good bowlers shoot for the corners. Meaning when you're trying to aim for the students that are more in the outskirts, you might actually hit all the pins when you, when you knock them down, which I thought was, like, mind-blowing in the way that it would really kind of hit, hit everybody, not just straighting, shooting straight down the center. After she was done discussing, they went on to council updates. So each one of the different, Commission for the Blind, Department of Health, they all had their different updates that they spoke about. Some of them were way over my head. And the ones that I did pick up on that I felt, you know, was applicable for me is that SPAN is actually starting a youth advocacy group, which I thought was really important because it's a lot of parents that do it now. And so it's, they're gonna be starting so that some of the young adults can actually start to work together to advocate for themselves. You know, and that they're hoping that that group You know, and that they're hoping that that group will then become more, stronger and engaged. And then they'll also try to get them to do more public speaking. So, I thought that was really, it kind of made me, give me like Tim Rower vibes. You know, who's an autistic gentleman that goes around to districts to speak about his experience and so forth. They talked about, the Department of Health talked about a pilot project working right now at the county level to work with autistic families of kids that have challenging behaviors, to see if they can help them, get them the resources to get the supports available for those individuals. But it's in like the infancy, infancy stages. They also did talk about April 10th, the Preschool Inclusion Leadership Conference, which I'd have no more information about that specifically, but I thought, anyway, quickly wrote that down. They did, maybe you guys understand this number, because when I was looking back at my notes, it didn't make sense, but the 619 update? Sorry if I seem silly that I don't know what that means anymore from last week. But, it did, they did talk about child outcome summary and IEP integration, and how they want that to start at the preschool level and really reviewing the child find vision and mission, as well as they did discuss the whole preschool consortium discussion again about how they have the initiative to provide preschool to all students, not just those with IEPs. But it did talk about the whole integration of services with regards to finding the individuals that need the services and so forth. So after that, they then moved on to talking about the State Performance Plan and Annual Performance Report, which was also extremely interesting to me. Must be like a weirdo, but. It talked about how they collect the data from the different departments. So, the US Department of Ed's mission, the Department, the US Department of Special Education, the State Special Education, and then this results-driven accountability organization, and how they all work together to ensure the improvement in outcomes of equity for students with disabilities. And so, it was, it was really interesting to just see all of that and how it works. It, for me, right, because I know that you guys might already be familiar with how that trickles down, but for me, on the, if you would, at the bottom of the barrel, like, I'm trying to, you know, it's good to understand and see how that all works. And so, it really helped, and it was common, like, people language. You know, so it's even more helpful. So it was really, like, if I, you know, you know, it was, it was very, it was, it was more casual, like I said, when I first got to the mic. But it explained how, within the system, and how each school district reports feeds into how the, they then compile all that data to then provide it to the federal government. So it was, it was really interesting, as well as how they discussed their, their state systemic improvement plan, which involved early literacy this year, or, yes. That they, the way, it's similar to Ms. Bello in the way that they report like, two years ago. But, you know, it was very interesting. So, I actually had to step away from the open comment, but I heard that they had really great open comments as well. And I really, like I said, in the beginning, I would urge anybody, you know, it's, it's very informative to, you know, to go on CAC. And you don't, I don't have any say, you can just watch it, you know, but it was, it was really, really, really great. The next day, on October 18th, I, I actually had enrolled in, over the summer, for the Bog Center, the Facing the Future Conference, which this year's focus was investing on employment for special, for special needs individuals and so forth. And since I probably myself won't really benefit from this services due to my children's disability, I wanted to really, like, have a better understanding of the process and some of the things that are available, and how to kind of help things move forward. Especially since I've been in the audience with other parents have come to the mic and spoken about transition and so forth. And so, I took three different sessions, but it was, there was a lot of resources. And, you know, I even met and got Bill Freeman, the State Coordinator for Secondary Education, his business card. So, you know. But, some of the resources that I attended was, one was collaborating with the community to build employment opportunities for our 18 to 21 program. And they gave a whole slew of different ideas. And it was really, really interesting. I don't, I hope that somebody from Mount Olive went. I didn't see anybody, but I was there. Then, the second one that I took was the Techniques for Successful Transition, which was intended for transition coordinators. But, it was really great to see how they, they work and some of the things as a CPAG leader to try to go back to the district to say, "Hey, you know, do we do CBI?" So CBI stands for Community-Based Instruction. And so, do we do CBI for the younger grade levels? You know, do, where do we start? Because my student, my children have been in, and I haven't seen them go out. And, you know, if you start earlier, then they get more used to the environment, and then they can maybe have more successful, like, work integration when they get older. And so, there was a whole slew of other things, just, you know, even down to, like, a Student Employee of the Month. You know, that, that, the school buildings, you know, to highlight when the, when the kids are really, have a great work month within the program. As well as, some of the buildings, the, they did it as a fundraiser for their 18 to 21 program, but they, they had like the yard signs, like the graduation signs. And they had, "I support Mount Olive Marauders Program", and the businesses put in front of their business. And then they find that they get more, more people that come in and want to support them because they support the students and within the district. But at the same time, they get more businesses that want to collaborate with the program for community-based work, like their work placements, because they want to be cool too. And so they get more, you know, this particular individual had 60, like, places that she was sending 16 students to. So, you know, it was, it was just showed, you know, when, when there is heart and soul, that she's really, she was, she was a very energetic lady who truly loved her job and her students. And, and it showed, because she said she took it from 14 to 60, which is huge. And then the last one that I attended was something called Flipping the Script. And it was, they did a reverse job fair, which I felt was really, really, really informative. Again, it's not something I'm going to benefit from, but it's something that, instead, so they basically, at the same time as, the same day as they did the job fair, for some of the, some of the businesses that they, students from their transition programs already were in, they flipped it. And so, instead of the kids going to the tables to meet the companies, the kids set up their own posters about themselves. And the kids then highlighted, and the companies who, the transition coordinator, kind of coordinator, kind of handpicked who would come in through. But, she, she, she had it where the kids basically highlighted themselves in their working environment, as well as had their own poster board up. So that way, the kids, some of the kids that may not do well in crowds or do well in more populated environments, don't get upset or nervous. They have their own focused time outside of the job fair. And so I really thought that was like a interesting and, like, inspirational way for our students to still be able to have those interview-type of experiences, but it be a little bit flipped for them, so that way they can still have a successful, potentially successful outcome. So those were, those two days. On October 21st, and I spoke last time about how I collaborated with some other CPAGs across the state, and that was our, our collaboration on executive functioning with ADHD. And there was, I want to say there was eight CPAGs across the state, and we had 50 families attend from multiple different districts across the state. And it was really informative to talk about how, for someone who doesn't have ADHD or executive functioning, to have a better understanding of how someone that does have that, those challenges, how to help them and how to understand it a little bit better. Because you don't realize some of the things that your seven-year-old is struggling with until you see it happen through the speaker. So, I'll stop talking. My, our next CPAG meeting is November 12th at 7:00 PM. It is a parent-only meeting this month, because I think I mentioned last month we're going to alternate the way that, you know, our goal this year is to try to have special services come on the other months to highlight something about special services, whatever they choose. Because they're basically, a whole thing is systemic, most of the times, in the model that they are providing. And so, to see whatever they want to, to present on, to present to the group. And so, that's going to be in our December meeting. So, so yeah, that, that's it for me. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you very much. That is like awesome. I would love to pick your brain a little bit more sometime.
No problem.
The CAC meeting is, it's a very high-level conversation with all the, you know, the Assistant Director of Education, the state reporter that reports all the indicators to the federal government, is a very high level, and it's seven hours. So you have to give the seven hours to, to watch the meeting, but it's worth it at the end, but it does take the entire day.
You have to sit down.
And that conference is amazing.
Both of them were very helpful, and it was, it was very informative, but I agree. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other, oh, parent committees, PTOs? Anyone else that would like, any board members that attended any meetings?
I just, tomorrow night is the Mount Olive Middle School's PTO meeting. Seven o'clock, it's virtual, so. They put that information out, but if you want to join, that's tomorrow.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on. We have, well, President's Report. The only thing I really wanted to share out was the board members here spent this past week attending many, many classes. I think some of us attended some legal classes, some of us attended middle school class. We learned a lot. Some of us attended, you know, technology, board building, building goals, working with our superintendent. We did spend our time thoroughly educating ourselves, bringing it back to our district. And we also got to honor Mr. Karifi, which if you saw down later on in the meeting, we actually have a resolution for him. So, Mr. Karifi was honored with the Unsung Heroes Award for, out of the entire state, for the security award. We do have pictures, I think, somewhere floating around, right? And that was all I had. Before we go into public comments, I did want to just share, we have one item to add to the agenda. Down under Administrative Action Items, 11.5, Formation of HIP finding case number 269417-MOM-09252024. Recommended action, resolve that the board affirms the finding that allegations of HIP were unfounded in case number 269417-MOM-09252024, heard during closed session this evening. And be it further resolved that the parent shall be provided with a written decision informing them of the disposition and their right, their appeal rights. So that will be added on to tonight's agenda. Being said, do we have any public comments on action items? And action items only. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Please state your name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the mic. And the mic is open for anyone for public comments only on action items.
Martin Walls, Mall of 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. I want to welcome everyone back. I hope you guys got back safe, we know issues down there in Atlantic City. Hope everyone had a good time, and you got to learn a lot. You know, I have a question, I was going over the bills, as I always do. Thank you, Nicole, for getting them on the system today, for going over bills. But I see yet again, we have another large payment to the architectural firm. Do we know how much we've paid them year-to-date? And is that normal? Is this year a above-normal amount of money being paid?
It's based on the projects that were approved. So, one of the project, and like I just, we've talked about this before, it's depending upon the size of the project, it's roughly between 6% or 7% of the construction project is the architectural fee. So, the biggest project that we have, we just finished, we're almost done with the Mountain View Roof. That was one large project. And the other one that we're in the middle of right now is the middle school HVAC project, which is a rod grant. So that is a larger project, so that's going to drive if, in, let me pull it out. In the description, do you know what page it's on?
It's on page 10. It was between page 10, it covered two pages, nine and 10. This says Mountain View Roof.
Yep, that's, okay, so. There's, there's one payment for the Mountain View Roof, for $28,000.
I know, but there's been multiples so far this year. Do we know if we're going to be spending more this year than past?
So if his fee, I'm just making up a number, is $100,000, then we pay when he submits invoices. We don't just cut him a check for the fee in full. He has to work through that, so he'll present progress billings on the project.
This one says dated 10/18, Mr. Rose Mueller.
I understand that, but my question is, are we spending more this year with the architect than we have in past years?
It's the same, it's the same percentage, his professional fee. Again, it's based on the projects that we put out there and bid on.
So, I guess this year we have more projects than past years, I would assume.
For right now, yes. And we are in the process of bidding out the CMS roof, which is a budgeted project for 2425 school year. So that will be, that bid date is November 19th. So at our next board meeting, we'll be awarding the contract for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to comment on action items? Nope, seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the monthly expenditures and reports. Can we have a motion to move them? I'm going to go down to Ms. Melendez, we're going to put you on the spot.
I'm eating.
I'll give you a minute.
Recommendation of the Superintendent, I present a motion to approve Section 7, Approval of Monthly Expenditures and Report from 7.1 to 7.4.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? No? Thank you, Ms. Melendez. We'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Wherever the name Jody Bosch appears abstained, rest on, yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And seeing Mr. Quino is not with us this evening, we'll have, Mrs. Fenton, can you make a motion for Personnel Action Items?
Sure. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, I'd like to move action items 7.1 to 7.4. I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, 8.1 to 8.19. Sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Yes, please.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yeah, on our initial agenda, there was several stipends listed for the middle school. I don't see that on here tonight.
I actually just saw it, and I know exactly what you're talking, speaking about. It is...
Extra pay for...
It's the, yeah, the, it's the MOMS 2024, extra pay for extra service positions and advisors. Let me just see which item it's under, though, because I just opened it, Mr. Strelachi.
I don't see that on the agenda here tonight.
It is under 8.9, Mr. Strelachi.
Let me just see.
I know exactly which one.
Yeah. Let me just check that. Okay, yes. Yes. Okay, let me see. Yeah. There, there is one on there that this board has never approved. And that is for a drama, another drama club at the middle school, where we already have a drama club. And basically, first of all, it shouldn't be on there, because no club can exist until the board approves it. Years ago, and I think we should get back to this, could we pay a fortune in stipends, folks? Years ago, in order to have a club, or some advisory group, or whatever, you had to fill out a form and submit it to the board for approval. And that, that was then, that fell under the supervision of the principal at each school. And that person, whoever was at that, directed that club, or that advisory, whatever, had to give a report every month to the principal to make sure that that stipend was being covered. And along the way, we rescinded several stipends because the, the people didn't meet, that it fell apart, and what have you. And, and we were just paying money out for nothing. But anyhow, in this case, there is one on there that I should be removed tonight, and that is that, that extra drama club. We already have a drama club, and why compete with our own drama club?
Which one are you speaking of?
It doesn't make sense.
So, well, Mr. Strelachi, so I actually had a brief correspondence with Dr. Bangia ahead of the meeting, because I had the same question. It's the Marauder Players. Dr. Bangia, can you explain which club?
It's replacing the theater slash acting club, it's a renaming of it.
So, what was that club, so I think more of, what's the difference between the theater slash act?
It's the same thing.
Versus our drama club that we already have in place? Is there any differential?
I'm not following you.
So we have a drama club, which Mr. Bosch is the director for music, for drama, for choreography.
That's a director, so that's the position, that's the work he does on those productions. So when we're talking about the club, that's working with the kids just throughout the school year who are interested in that type of work. So it's not an actual production, so that's the difference. So we're doing, we're talking about a club?
Yeah.
It's student-oriented, they meet throughout the school year to encourage the, you know, theater-related skills, and he works with those students versus the actual directing of productions. So those are two separate things. Did I get that right, Ms. Wilpe?
It may.
One is not, there's no production with this. This is just kids who...
After-school activity.
Yeah, and this is...
After-school, once a week.
Yeah.
That they just want to learn about...
This has been on the standing books, they just renamed the club.
Yeah, they're not, that is not a new club.
No.
And it was with, you know, EMO, and within, you know, with Mr. Moore, just make some clubs that have been dormant but are in the EMO contract.
It is not an EMO contract. It is not, it has not been approved, it's not been in the EMO contract.
So, was deemed something else in the contract, but are you telling us that this was a club that was sitting there dormant in the past?
There were several clubs that were, you know, were approved, that just, you know, was no advisor for, there was no interest. So, you know, I, and kids last year asked, I don't understand.
Yeah.
Do you want to come to the mic?
Can you come to the mic, do you mind?
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Wilpe. We would like to all hear the information, as well as those at home.
All right, start from the beginning, if you don't mind.
Yes, so last year, actually over the past few years, several student, many, many students have come forward about wanting, you know, different clubs. So, it, and teachers have come forward with, you know, different ideas. So, in speaking with, with EMO and Mr. Moore, there were several clubs in the EMO contract that haven't run at the middle school for several years. So, one of the, there were, you know, kids that were interested in not a production, because there's kids who don't want to be on a stage, they just want to learn about acting. So, that, you know, they want to, again, not for the sake of being on, you know, putting a show on, but more about acting, public speaking, and not a debate, but just being able to... but more about acting, public speaking, and not a debate, but just being able to grow that confidence and learning the ins and outs. Again, not production based at all. A book club, a fitness club, all the, you know, different things. So we, I looked with Mr. Moore and we spoke with EMO about some of the many clubs that have not run for years at our, at the middle school. And we saw what would fit thematically to kind of appeal to the kids. And that was, again, conversation with EMO. So they're not additional stipends. It's stipends that have been approved. We just renamed the club to make it fit. So like the, there was a wellness club in the path that hasn't run for a very long time and that became the fitness club. You know, that's just one that I can think of off the top of my head that was in addition to, because I don't, you know, have them all off the top of my head. So this is not a competition because it's not a production at all. It's more about the kids who just want something to do after school, once a week, to learn about the skills of acting and not putting on a show.
Or if their schedule doesn't support being in a school plan.
Exactly, exactly, because sometimes kids have all the different activities. So this was more to, you know, and it was what the kids had brought to the table of the different ideas that they had. So again, it's not another show that will be presented, you know, produced in any way at the middle school. So I don't know if that, I wasn't prepared to have, I didn't have any information. So that's, that's where that comes from.
I would make this suggestion to the board. We have a very, very successful middle school drama production. I certainly don't want to jeopardize that. But the other thing is this. Before we approve a stipend for someone, that should come to the board and it should say this, because the board had always had this stipulation that it needed 10 students or more in order to form a club and pay somebody money. So what we would need from you and from whatever is to come to the board. And I would, I would like at the next meeting to see Mr. Bosch come to the board too. I don't want to ruin a program that's been very successful, okay? But I also want to know how many students are going to be in that club before we say, okay, here, take the money. You want to start a club? Go ahead. And what's he ask? Three kids? And how, and we want to know how often they meet and what his agenda is.
And then we would have to then.
So, Mr. Strelachi, what we'll do at the Personnel Committee meeting, which is already next week, we'll share that information.
So I would say that that should be tabled out of that part of the, you know, action item.
Can I ask how many students we have in this club?
But they're not signed up.
Right now, yeah.
They don't know that, so.
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't have any of that with me.
You're going to prove a club, you don't know how many kids, and we're going to pay $1,500. For what? Maybe three kids. We don't know yet. Maybe it'll be 20 kids. If that's the case, it's a different story. But we should not put the cart before the horse.
And again, I just, this.
Look, it's okay. Appreciate, appreciate coming up.
Thank you for the information.
I think, Mr. Strelachi, I think we would, me personally would love to see how they interact together and understand more.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
My other question is with regards to the extra positions and advisors. If there's a program that doesn't take off and have enough student enrollment, what occurs with the advisor and the stipend?
I would like to clarify that both the middle school and the high school have activity coordinators who oversee that. They submit monthly reports. I don't believe that necessarily has been done in the past. It's everything electronically maintained as far as attendance is concerned, what they do at these meetings. So that is something that is closely monitored. So certainly I can understand as far as in the past, perhaps, that things were, you know, not, I don't know how they were maintained, but I know for the past two years that we have records as far as being submitted on a monthly basis. And we have coordinators who oversee that.
Could we get a report of it at the next meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Well, I would suggest that if our concern is based on participants, which is a good point that Mr. Strelachi brings, then that to have the participant not only for that one, but for all the others.
Agreed.
Agreed.
What would occur, Dr. Bangia, if all these listed were to be tabled to the next meeting? Would they not be able to start?
I think there's a miscommunication. This is an annual approval that we do as the basis both at the high school and middle school. I believe with the exception of this particular club that was renamed, that everything else has been a standing position as far as expecting they're working with students. So I think, I don't believe tabling this at this moment is going to be in the best interest of the staff nor the students who participate in these programs.
You know, I'm not saying that the people aren't doing their job and none of these things are not worthwhile. But if we're going to be spending money, we should know what we're spending the money on. Is that, is that particular club still functional to the point where it's worth paying that kind of stipend for it? We just can't keep throwing money away.
And that's why it's important to have these conversations, you know, at the end of the day, when the agenda is shared out the Thursday before, in order to provide that information, because we do take great lengths, the team, to provide this information in a timely manner. So I, I understand if you'd like to revisit this particular one, I can understand that. But everything on that list has been approved year in, year out. So if you're changing the expectations, that is a change of practice from prior years, including last year.
So, Mr. Strelachi, at the moment, are you making a motion at all on the table?
Yes, I'm making a motion to table out that one. I don't have.
The Marauder Players.
Yes, players.
Okay.
Until the further date. The rest, I have no problem with.
Okay, so Mr. Strelachi has put a motion on the table to table the Marauder Players position advisor stipend. Do we have a second for the tabling of that one line item? Nope, seeing none, okay.
Thank you.
I do agree that, you know, let's find out some more, Mr. Strelachi.
I would like to look at it a little more closely at our next meeting and I will, I will advise. Because I honestly don't think at this point that is fair. I did bring up the question and I did ask it and I was, I was okay with the difference. We have had that, whatever it was named before, on for quite a while, even though they just renamed it. So I was satisfied with that answer.
We're going to approve this club and we don't know how many children are going to be in it yet, is that the answer?
Well, at that point, I don't know if we know how many children are in any of these clubs. And at this point, school is already starting, so.
But, Mrs. Strelachi, it's really important to understand that.
So is that being prudent?
No, but I think it's October already and I don't want to.
There's some clubs that haven't even formed yet. Mountain Club hasn't started. The signups just went out. Drama Club, we, you know, we still have auditions coming up. But what I would like, definitely a caveat that we get a report back in with regards to, one, the operations of these clubs, the participation. I also would be interested to see maybe how the Marauder Players, you know, work and integrate with the Drama Club.
Productions.
Productions, definitely two things that are very similar. I think we would like a, maybe a visual, I'm a visual person, you know, a true understanding. But, Mr. Strelachi, your, your vote is how you wish to vote on that, on everything. And I do actually appreciate the conversation though. I think it's also beneficial for the public to get the understanding of what some of these programs are too. If we have these questions, I could only imagine others have those questions. Even if we agree to disagree, it's an important conversation to have.
I'm just disappointed that we would, we want to spend money on something that we don't know anything about yet, that's all.
I absolutely understand how you feel. Anyone else?
I have a question, yes. Going back to the, to the point, let's see that some of those clubs haven't started yet. And let's see that it is approved and there is no enrollment on that.
Yep, that's kind of my question before.
So what will happen with those funds?
So if we approve them and there aren't 10 students that, at minimum, that are.
And the person wouldn't get paid because there's no club to lead, so to speak, as a faculty advisor.
The club would dissolve.
And I'm going to be really clear. The best practice really at the end of the day is the school district. And Mr. Geppert, probably we can chime in on this, is actually at the end of the school year in which, the school year prior, all these appointments were actually the summer prior should be, all these should be approved. Yes. That's the best practice.
That is typically the way that it's done.
So, you know, we actually already do it a little later. So this question of how many kids are participating, you know, it's usually a backwards look, right? As far as, you know, what happened the prior school year. So typically, school districts approve these stipend positions in the summertime after the budget is opened up. So typically around August, in which teachers at the end of the school year in June are asked, hey, you want to come back? This will be advertised, we, you know, post, so to speak, and then they're approved over the summertime. That is the best practice.
Makes sense. However, it will be more easier for the board if we at least have the data from the previous year at that time. For example, you just add one column here for next year.
You know what we can do certainly, because the activities coordinators already do this, right? We can look at just creating a spreadsheet with a list of the clubs and listing out the enrollment. So this way we can have that. But that's certainly something we can do moving forward. And our activities coordinators, both at the middle school and high school, are exceptional. They do their due diligence to really make sure that they, A, provide the support to these advisors, but also the oversight that's acquired to ensure that our students are being able to participate in a number of activities. And I'm really proud of the fact that we do have a number of activities, as a young lady's pointed out at the onset of the liaison. You know, we offer a number of things and, you know, Strelachi pointed that as well. And all we're trying to do is to ensure that we're not go exceeding what was stated in the collective bargaining agreement with EMO. And certainly at the same time, ensuring that what we have in the books is meeting the needs of our kids. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think, I think the committees have some follow-up, you know, suburbia of them. All right, then, do we have a, we have a second on the floor to move personnel action items? 8.1 through 8.19.
Who is me? Second?
Second. And seeing no other questions at the moment, we'll take a roll call, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
No on 8.9, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes, and we'll definitely have some follow-up conversations in committees, I believe. All right, moving forward, we have curriculum and technology, Ms. Fenton, again.
Thank you. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve 9.1 to 9.9.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board with regards to curriculum and technology? Okay, seeing none. We'll take a roll call, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And we'll move to finance and operations. Ms. Fitzgerald down there.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 10.1 through 10.4.
Second.
Second.
And do we have any questions from the board or comments? Nope, okay, seeing none. We'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi? Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And we will move to administrative action items. Let's go back to Ms. Melendez. It's like I came here.
And a reminder of the 11.5.
And that goes, yeah, 11.5.
Madam President, are you going to read the resolution? Will she say 11.1 now or later?
Mr. Karifi, we're going to bring you back up. Come on up. And Ms. Melendez, you're welcome to read it. No, I don't know if she needed it for 11.5.
Okay, today we have the honor to have a resolution honoring unsung superheroes in education, especially in the security area, Mr. James Karifi. Whereas Mr. James Karifi has served with distinction in the Manolive Township School District as Director of Security for five years. And whereas through his work, the Manolive Township School District has continued to be safe and nurturing environment for all students. And whereas he has further contributed to the community by serving as the Director of Security. And whereas Mr. James Karifi exemplary commitment to the well-being of the young people of Manolive Township School District has expanded opportunities for them, both in the classroom and community. And whereas Mr. James Karifi has worked tirelessly as an unsung superhero, making an immeasurable impact on the students of Manolive Township School District. And whereas by performing his duties with competency and compassion, he has demonstrated a commitment to the welfare of all students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Manolive Township Board of Education recognizes Mr. James Karifi's dedication and commitment to advancing student achievement. And be it further resolved that the members of the Manolive Township Board of Education extend their sincere appreciation to Mr. James Karifi for their devoted service to the Manolive Township School District. And be it further resolved that the members of the Manolive Township Board of Education extend their best wishes to Mr. James Karifi in all of their future endeavors. Thank you.
I'll just say this, I'll accept the award on behalf of my entire team, because I believe it's truly a team effort. And the board for believing in the security and the measures that you take is fantastic feat that the rest of my colleagues throughout the county and the state look upon Manolive as, as a role model and accomplishment of what we've done here and what we continue to do. So you guys truly deserve the credit. And I'll just tell you on behalf of my team, because they deserve the credit as well, but so do you for what you believe in for the district on the security measures that you put in place here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we? Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Karifi, again. And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I would like to present a motion to approve actions under section 11. Section 11.1 through 11.5.
Second.
Do we have any questions from the board after that? Okay, we'll take a roll call, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
On 11.1 through 11.4, yes. I abstain on 11.5.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
All right, and we are moving on to old business. Members of the board may comment on any item or topic that was previously discussed by the board. Does anybody have any items for old business? Anyone over there? Nope, no old business. All right, we'll move to new business. Members of the board may introduce any new topic, item or topic of discussion for the board to consider. Anyone with new business? No new business? All right. Here we go. We're moving to public comment. Students, parents, employees and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Please state your name and address for the record and please speak slowly and directly into the mic. And the floor is open.
Martin Wells Muller, 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. First off, I want to start a big shout out to lunch for Saturday night. They had an amazing showing at the Sandop House. Staff, teachers, new teacher was there, parents were there, had a great time listening to lunch. It was probably the number one performing band they've had at the Sandop House in years. They actually said they invited them to come back. They said they had three other bands recently and they paid a quarter of the amount of revenue for the Sandop House. And it was just a great time. I saw a ton of students that I know and recognize and people that went there. Our liaisons for the high school, one had a ticket but she couldn't go. Our liaisons for the high school, one had a ticket but she couldn't go, she was so upset now. But it was nice seeing the kids out there performing. I'm friends with a lot of the families that are part of Lunch and I will gladly support them. So, I'm here on two different things. One, I want to compliment Nicole, even though I drive her crazy, with my Oprah request.
Ms. Shonig.
All right, I'm sorry. But, but I'm a little upset with the Oprah request process which is being put in front of us today. You know, and I don't normally read my Oprah request, what I request, but tonight I'm going to. And I want this to be addressed and I'd like to get what I'm Oprah requesting. Normally I keep these private, but based on what the answers I'm getting from the board, I am going to read it.
Okay, I'd like to say before we start, I like to speak in general terms and some of the Oprah requests have been declined because of attorney-client privilege, work-product privilege, pending litigation, all which are the appropriate legal response. I would caution you not to read anything that is part of pending litigation at this point. And I am familiar, I don't want to get into the specifics, but I'm familiar with some of your requests. Some of them clearly relate to pending litigation and the other items of attorney-client privilege and work-product are also raised as a result. So I would caution you and urge you not to read anything that has to do with pending litigation.
Noted and I'm still going to read it. Okay. Attorney-client privilege generally to protect the confidential communications between an attorney and their client made for the purpose of seeking provided legal advice. And the person sending the email is not a client, which Anthony Giordano is not a client or a Board of Ed member. In this case, the communication is not protected by attorney-client privilege. Breaching privilege by an email can have serious consequences, such as making sensitive legal statements or advice discoverable in litigation by Oprah, exactly what he did. I am Oprah requesting what mistake that was made. Okay, I'm requesting the Board of Ed to file the Oprah request process and provide the requested Oprah request made by myself on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. For item number one, the situation was straightforward. Dr. Giordano received an email from the insurance company's attorney.
Once again, I'm going to ask.
I will read my email.
Mr. Wells-Miller.
I'm going to ask you not to make comments upon items that are part of pending litigation at this point. You, you have a right to say you disagree with the Oprah process.
I will still read my email.
No, I would caution you not to do that.
I understand the caution. I'm going to advance.
The board has an obligation not to reveal confidential litigation matters, attorney-client privilege matters and other items that occur.
It's not.
But, yes, it is.
It was breached.
We have also gone down the road of having to explain that an individual member cannot waive an attorney-client privilege, that it has to be done by the board itself. It has to be done by the present board that is sitting on the board.
Mr. Wells-Miller, please listen to the attorney.
Outside the privy of the group, it breached it.
No, it doesn't. The, as, as Ms. Shonig had clearly articulated in her response to you that it's the board, it's an institution that waives it. And it's not even the former board, it's the current board that has the power under the law to waive it. I would ask you not to compromise this board by revealing public, confidential information and pending litigation at this point.
But it's not anymore.
Mr. Wells-Miller.
Mr. Wells-Miller, you're not an attorney.
I'm going to ask you to leave if you can't take the advice of our board attorney.
His advice is incorrect.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Karifi to escort you out, so we're asking you not to read it.
I will, I will read, but come back to this.
Mr. Wells-Miller, we are following the legal advice of an attorney. You are not an attorney. You are welcome to continue your comments, as you've already wasted two minutes, of anything else you would like to speak on with regards to the district that does not compromise the legal actions.
I'll leave the second aspect of it without leaving the names out of it. In this situation, it's important to notice that an individual is neither a client of the Mount Olive Board of Education or an employee and therefore cannot claim protected under attorney-client privilege. The privilege was waived at the moment the email was forwarded from so-and-so, the email to third parties. Under New Jersey law, the attorney-client privilege is forfeited when a communication is discussed to individuals outside the scope of the attorney-client relationship, as was done in this case. As established in Haddon versus Keene University, comma, colon, four-three-four dot NJ Superior, dot one, dot sixteen, parentheses, approximately division two thousand thirteen in that case. I gave you the specific case that, that, that proves my point. In this case, the court found that the privilege no longer applied once privileged communications were shared with individuals were not directly connected to this matter. And that happened with some of the portions of this email that was sent. The private privileged communication part is null and void.
Mr. Wells-Miller.
I'm just reading right here. I'm not asking for a comment. I'm just going to finish, I'm, I'm leaving names out. All right. Moreover, the email in question involves prior parties that were not engaged in both the Mount Olive Board of Education's Office of Civil Rights, OCR, further undermining any kind of privilege in New Jersey courts, have had the attorney-client privilege only applied to communications made with a reasonable expectation of confidentiality for the purpose of obtaining legal advice. State versus Mutawa, comma, two hundred and eight, NJ, five nineteen dash five thirteen, two thousand twelve. Given that third parties were involved in the communications, lost the expectation of confidentiality and privilege, does not extend the communications involving individuals who are not necessarily in legal representations. Mr. Giordano is not in representation.
Once again, I ask you not to use names, not to speak about specific things. When you are done, I will state what the correct response is and what the correct status of the law is.
You, you've, you have now gone on for over five minutes.
Okay, I would be done if you'd let me finish, okay? The second request I asked for was a communication from someone to Mr. Geppert, who's, you are not his attorney, and to someone else, which I will name, back in October. Asking, I think it was writing the response to your letter dated September fifth regarding my request in indemnification reimbursement of legal fees. That item is also not protected under the same bylaws and I also have not been provided that email, okay? I do, like I said, I do realize that failing to provide these request information is a violation of the Oprah laws and it is. Now, I'm not, this has nothing to do with Nicole. She's done an amazing job. I'm questioning.
Mrs. Shonig.
Mrs. Shonig, I'm sorry. I apologize, I call a lot of people by their first names. I just want to make sure that it's done properly. And finally, I have a question issue. In September board meeting, a member of the board asked questions about the scrap metal investigation. I also saw one of my things, that someone in the community requested that report. Now, is it correct that that investigation was paid for by the Mount Olive School District?
Mr. Wells-Miller, we do not comment on personnel matters.
No, I'm asking if the report was paid for by tax dollars by the Mount Olive School District.
Mr. Wells-Miller, this board does not comment on personnel matters and anything that we have to extend funds for is for the purpose and the safety in the best interest of this district.
So that's a yes?
No.
So the board didn't use tax dollars?
Mr. Wells-Miller, I am not in a conversation here.
You can make a request and the district could get back to you. You're here to make public comments and we'll respond at the appropriate time.
All right, in the latest version of a lawsuit filed, the person involved referenced that a Ford F-1250 pickup truck was scrapped. I was hoping, I was wondering if that was part of the investigation because that's another public document, a court case. How much did it cost for the investigation and what was the conclusion? And, and the question is that some of the reason why some of the staff have left the district because of this?
The district will take your questions. They'll respond at the appropriate time.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, one, I'd like to thank you for making your comments. It's always important what the citizens have to say. I do want to be clear to the public because you stated several things that are inaccurate. The reality is the first matter you talked to is clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. It's clearly covered by work-product privilege and it's clearly covered by pending litigation. The second matter, which, and one I want to point out too, that just because an individual does something does not waive the attorney-client privilege. As you saw in Ms. Shonig's response, case law is clear that it's the institution that has that privilege and it's the current institution that's in place. So everything's been done properly there. With respect to the second matter that you spoke of, once again, that deals with pending litigation. It involves with work product and with the actions of the attorney in response to it. So just to be clear, that is what the, the status of the law is. But we do appreciate you coming up and providing your comments.
But there is case law stipulating that it's been violated.
No, I disagree with you on that.
Let's choose to disagree on that together.
This isn't a conversation. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who would like to come to the mic, public comments? Again, abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. The mic is open. All right, seeing none, we will move on. Do we have some board comments? We'll start down at the end.
I'm good, thanks.
Just congratulations again to Mr. Karifi and thank you very much, Ms. Bello, for the thorough presentation. I appreciate it.
Congratulations to Mr. Karifi. We have several, four days of intense training and that was great and I hope, I think all of us took very well advantage of that. We missed terrible Mr. Strelachi over there.
We missed you.
For the training, yeah, and his guidance. But it was a very intensive week and very interesting. I hope the new members took advantage and enjoyed that as well. For the kids, I was to the, in the football game, that was intense and very good. And also to the Broadway musical, congratulations to all those talented students that we have. And then to our board members, thank you for, for the great experience and bonding and, you know, having a, a good time at the personal level. So we get the opportunity to know to each other a little bit further rather than at these limited meetings that we have. Sometimes contentious and sometimes not. Thank you.
I'm going to agree with everybody. Congratulations, Mr. Karifi. Thank you, Ms. Bello. And, and you couldn't have said it better about our board. We did really, the classes we all took were like, it's intense, it's tiring. But then we get together at night and we get to see a little different side of each other and it's fun. It's fun. We have a good time. We could laugh and cry and whatever, but I'm, I'm still tired because I got to bed at nine thirty and things don't start until then. But anyway, that's it. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Halloween too.
Okay, we're going to swing it down. Mr. Strelachi, we'll start with you.
Yeah, also, thank you, Spel. Very good report. It's good that the public hears it too. And we know most of it, but it's good that the public hears it. Mr. Karifi, congratulations. Mount Olive has been known for being the first, one of the first ever school districts to have security officers. So, I, I forget exactly where, but somewhere in the eighties, the town, the town got a grant from the government to be able to give us two, and they paid half and we paid half, two security officers, one for the middle school and one for the high school. The next year, they couldn't afford it, but we, we paid both. That's what happens with the town, by the way. But in any event, we've continued to carry it through and the outcome has been a tremendous director and one of the safest school districts noted in the state. So we're very happy about that. The last thing I want to say is a bit of being very proud. My granddaughter auditioned for the National Choir. Five thousand people tried out and she was selected. She'll be going to Dallas in March for the National Choir.
Congratulations.
I'm done, thanks.
Sure. Let's figure out.
Mrs. Melendez, I share your same sentiments about last week. It was great seeing everybody in a different light. Mr. Karifi, thank you for keeping all of us safe. Very well deserved. And I just wanted to wish a happy Diwali to everybody who celebrates on Friday.
Yes, happy Diwali.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Again, it was a great time in Atlantic City. I loved all of the sections I took. I learned a lot of things and I met a lot of people that had, you know, different kinds of boards, different ideas about things and it was really great and I thank everybody for the opportunity of going. Mr. Karifi, congratulations. I said it like a million times. And that was it.
And do we have anything from the, Dr. Bangia?
I think I already said it all before. One thing I did want to say, first of all, the band lunch was phenomenal. First of all, we also had the Rock and Roll Academy attend and be spotlighted in front of all the school boards for the second year in the state. So the students came down and performed in the convention center. So we got to show off a little bit more, so we had two spotlights. We had Mr. Karifi and we had our band. The event that Mr. Wells-Miller referenced, I just want to state, was not a school-sponsored event. It was students from the school that have an outside band and it's just the shows, regardless of if they're in school or out of school, this whole community supports one another in just amazing ways. So the students took what they, you know, opportunities they've had here and put it into practice outside of our district to form their own band and perform in a, you know, open setting. And it was phenomenal place, I think might have been sold out. And it was, again, local faces, common faces. I'm just going to throw out from two ideas, maybe we could discuss it as a board as we're wrapping up with our strategic planning and our district goals, piggybacking off of that of some board goals maybe putting out there and potentially a board retreat too. We can do more bonding, Ms. Melendez. Amazing athletic, you know, feats we have going on, gymnastics, football, I can't even remember all of them. It's amazing. And have a great Halloween and happy Diwali for those celebrating. That's all I have and I will close that out. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, I'll take a motion to close. I have nothing for closed session. I don't believe we have any confidential session and so we are done. I'll take an adjournment. Do we have a second?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?